Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 8th, 2024 Winchester Select Board Meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, and Michael Beckencourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph is here as well. We're just going to jump right into our agenda. Happy New Year, everyone. And we're going to start with the acceptance of donations.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of 21 trees valued at $6,800 from the Mahoney family and Mahoney's Garden Center to the town of Winchester for the enhancement of Winchester's public spaces.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude donations in the amount of $470 to the Council on Aging for Appreciation of Transportation Services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you for those donations, especially the trees. Next up, Beth, your Town Manager's report.
So just a few updates on items not on the agenda tonight. First up, as we all know, we've been working on our communications study with the Column Center from UMass Boston. And we have a couple of focus groups that we're still looking for some residents to help us out with. There'll be two virtual sessions, one on January 16th at 5:30 to talk about how the town can improve communications, and one on January 25th at 5:30 to talk about website improvements. And then there's two in-person sessions, one on January 23rd at 1:00 p.m. to talk about the website improvements, and then one on January 23rd at 5:30 p.m. here at Town Hall to talk about communications. So encourage anybody who's able to sign up for those to please do so. Housing production plan, we had, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we had our advisory group meeting in December, and we're actually looking to schedule some additional focus groups related to that. We are working with MAPC right now to finalize those dates. It will likely be later this month or early February. So again, we'll be looking for residents to help us out there. Also, we've been working over the past few months with a small group, including Rich and the Town Planner, the Chair of the Planning Board, and a representative from the Chamber of Commerce. We received some ARPA, state ARPA funding about a year or so ago to hire an economic development consultant. So we're working right now to issue that RFP, put that out, and we're hoping to get proposals back in early February. Transportation permits, we are transitioning to the license plate reader system from our regular stickers. So no longer will everybody have their little Winchester identification sticker on the side of their car. We are working with the town clerk, who will be putting out some correspondence later this month with the census about how residents can sign up for the license plate reader. Obviously, you know, you won't be going to the transportation through receipt from the town clerk to get the sticker on your car. There'll be a new process, and we're encouraging people to use our online system to sign up for those. So more to come there. Benson Owen Safer to School Project. So this is a project that actually finished up last year, but very pleased to say that the Secretary of Transportation and the Highway Administrator Jonathan Gulliver will be out a week from today, a week from tomorrow, excuse me, January 16th, for a ribbon cutting ceremony out at the Benson Owen School. So that will be a nice ceremony with some of the kids out there as well. Encourage anybody to attend who's able. And then a few construction updates. So Eversource is back, was back for a couple of days last week. I'm not sure if they'll be back this week with the snow. To continue, there are splicing activities on Cross Street. The Cross Street Bridge Project is still ongoing. Should be finished by the end of this month. And then later this spring, we'll be transitioning to work on the Cross Street Bridge. And then we have a variety of projects that are waiting to start this spring, the Woodside Road improvements, Winchester High School Drainage, McDonald Field Pump Station, those contracts are all, contracts are awarded, just waiting to start up work this spring. And then a few design work from the funding that we got at Fall Town Meeting. So the design for the three roofs, that contract will be executed this month. Packer Ellis Tennis Courts, we're working with VHB and Chris Huntress to get them under contract to look at the design for that. Shore Road and Everdav Culvert, we expect to have contracts executed later this month. And then we've issued an RFP to select a consultant for the Town Hall and Library Window Project. And we have a designer selection process scheduled for latest this month to select a consultant for that. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Beth? All right. Thank you, Beth. Moving right along. At this point in our meeting, we're at the time where we'll entertain public comment. If anybody's here to make a public comment, please raise your hand. We'll recognize you, come up, state your name, state your address, and we'll give you up to three minutes to deliver your public comment. Is anyone here for a public comment? Seeing no one, we'll keep moving. So it looks like, Patty, we've got one license to do?
Yes. Renewal of the lodging house.
Need to approve the Carlyle House? And staff satisfied, everything's in order?
Yes.
Okay.
So I wasn't one of those people that ain't got paperwork in.
All right.
We weren't sure they were stolen.
They're open. Any questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to renew the annual lodging house license for Carlyle House.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Sure enough, it passes. Great. Move on to our business agenda, and the first item on our business agenda is the 2024 election update. Nice to see our Town Clerk, Mary Ellen here. Come on up, Mary Ellen, how are you?
I'm good. How are you guys and gals? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Sounds like you've got a busy year ahead of you.
Yeah, just a little bit. And starting off with a bang. So I know that some of us have had some conversations about the elections and just sort of ramping up to what our day-to-day operations is for the clerk's office. But I wanted to just come tonight to let you know that we are definitely holding the March 5th Presidential Primary as well as the March 26th Annual Town Election at Winchester High School. That is our designated polling location. You folks voted that a couple of years ago, and that will stay until and if we ever look at other sites in the future. But talked to the school department. We've worked through some of our challenges with traffic and things like that. So I wanted to come tonight, not only to just let you know that, give you some reassurance that that's getting ironed out, I also wanted to let you know that we're working with Frank Thatchelder over at the Police Department, as we always do, to make sure that when school's in session on the 26th of March, we've got accommodations for staff. We're going to be quartering off some of, a portion of JENX parking lot, portions of Skilling's and things like that, that we typically do, that you've been through and probably experienced as a voter coming into the site. So that was the first thing I wanted to say. But then the main reason for being here is because of this application that you see up on the screen. This vote-by-mail application was sent out by the Secretary of the Commonwealth to the roughly 6.3 million voters across the Commonwealth. They were postmarked last Friday. So the residents will be receiving these. And I just would love you all to chat it up. And our ultimate goal with vote-by-mail is to create a balance between the number of voters that are coming in person, the number of voters that can utilize this. The work has really significantly changed over the last four years with the change in the administration and legislation of elections. So what we're doing is we're basically taking what was the election day, and we're giving the voters three options, right? So they can come in person, vote at the Town Hall. We have, in this case, on a primary, we will have six days of early voting in person. We typically have 6% or 7% of our electorate that have chosen that in the past. I would love to see people come in, maybe closer to 10% or 12%, to come to Town Hall because we can accommodate them. We'll have poll workers available. We'll be able to really give them good customer service for that experience. And then the same thing goes for the vote-by-mail, really trying to encourage the voters to do that. When we first had the change in the legislation, the vote-by-mail started in 2020 during the pandemic. So we have numbers that are hard to determine whether we're going to get to those same numbers because of the pandemic. So now that we're out of that, I mean, I'm hoping we could get 30%, 40% of our electorate to choose to vote by mail. Some of you may have remembered from the Fall Town Meeting that we asked for funding, and we received it for something called a central ballot tabulation machine. So all of this investment in the IT is giving a great amount of security to the process, and it's also allowing us to keep the ballots that people are going to use for vote-by-mail or in-person. We've always secured them in the vault at night and all of that. But we no longer will have to put them in the police cruisers and take them to the polls on election day and run them through the machines because this new process will allow us to safeguard them here. So if anybody had any reservations about voting by mail because they were worried about the custody and the chain of custody, I just wanted to come tonight to just sort of give the electorate or give the voters a sense of security that, you know, we definitely are interested in you participating in this manner. And that will alleviate the concerns of our public school district, which are completely valid concerns because they have pressures with how many students are driving and how many teachers need accommodation. So it's a community effort, it's everybody pitching in. And if we can kind of spread out the percentages, I think we can manage the elections that are also at the same time we have school in session. So that was my little pitch. And one thing to point out, if you are what is referred to as an unenrolled voter, some people call it independent in the Commonwealth, when you get your postcard, please check the box that says whether you want Democrat, Republican, or Libertarian. We've started to get in some applications, and then when people don't check them, we probably have a, 2/3 of our registered voters are unenrolled. So they have not aligned with a particular party. So just try to remember that when you're out talking to your constituents and people, you know, around town so that we can really streamline the process. I mean, we're excited about it, we're ready for it. We've got some poll worker training coming up. I'm still looking for poll workers. If anybody has some folks they can pass the message on to, we have a variety of options, too. You don't have to commit to working the 14-hour day if you don't want to do election day. You can come and help with early voting. You can come and help with absentee ballot processing and things like that. So yeah, so we're pretty excited about it. And just thank the Superintendent Frank Hackett and his team for their support because we had to negotiate a little bit with the traffic and things like that. So I really appreciate them understanding everything that we're up against as well. So team effort, I think we're going to be okay.
Great.
So, does anybody have any questions?
Do. So Mary Ellen, do you think the vote-by-mail will increase the participation rate of eligible voters? Have you seen that? And how about nationally or just locally or what do you think?
I haven't seen it yet, but I think part of that was because of the timing of when the state was launching vote-by-mail at the same time we had this horrible horrific pandemic. And even in '22, when we were sort of coming through the pandemic, I don't think there was enough sort of ability for people to just deal with what it really meant. And there was a lot of rhetoric around it, too. So we're hoping that we're getting through that, and we can really see it for what it is, which is really efficiency. And it gives people the opportunity to vote in many different places and manners. And so it is the whole premise that the Secretary of the Commonwealth and the legislators have, you know, sort of taken on as the reason why we changed the law is because we want more people to participate. And it is difficult to do it on election day.
Right.
It's tough. You've got to work, you know?
Yep. So I think when you go to the town's website, I don't think there's like a little banner, maybe there is, that says, "Now you can vote by mail." Does it say that?
Today, we launched the vote button. Winchester.
Vote!
We have, yep, we got it all planned. There is a vote button. Jennifer Caparella, who's our website designer, she's awesome. She's great with all the looks of the site. I'm just the boring legalistic stuff. So she put on that vote button years ago, and now it's just, it's my logo. It's just the little vote button, red, white, and blue, and it's up on the homepage. And we've got the whole annual town election on the site right now with applications for vote-by-mail. And they can use one application and apply for all elections. Like if they want to just vote all four elections, they can just check that top box, and then clerically, staff will funnel it into the right category so a ballot goes out to all elections. So we're hoping that people will check all elections for 2024. And then, yeah, so I think the one last thing I'll mention, because we have the elections three weeks apart. You have your Presidential, March 5th, and then the 26th. It's a tight timeline, so what you see when you click the vote button is going to be the annual town election. Because just beginning January 2nd, we started the nomination process. So if you're running for town office, you're running for Select Board, you're running for School Committee, you're coming in and talking to us now. We're giving you your nominations. So we have these two parallel tracks, and at the same time, we're doing the whole ballot layout for the Presidential Primary. So anyway, it's a little technical, but there you have it. Any other questions or thoughts?
How does someone know their mailed-in vote has been received versus they should show up at the polling location on the day of?
There is a website that the Secretary of State's office manages, and we link to it on that vote page. They certainly can call us, and we will verify that it's been received. And we'll, we have a separate voter registration database. Everything gets cleared through my office. We timestamp everything, and then the staff puts it in the Secretary of State's official voter registration database. So it's going to say that it was timestamped today and received. And then it'll go into the vault and just sit there locked and secured. But there is a push-out every night on everything, every town clerk across the Commonwealth processes. It uploads, and then someone can go out to that website and check. It's called Track My Ballot. So we'll start marketing that. And I actually saw Ryan tonight, I haven't seen him in a long time. And I was just chatting, and he said he could definitely do any PR that we need. So we'll be sure to put that out there as well. Yeah. Okay.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
All righty.
Thanks for coming in.
Take care. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have an ARPA update. So kind of dovetailing off our Budget Summit on Friday, where we had some, you know, information and good conversation with some of the other board's representatives in town, Cooney Capital, School Committee, Finance Committee, staff, our comptroller Stacy Ward. You know, we have these, you know, standing items, you know, capital planning update, budget, FY25 budget, and the ARPA update that, you know, we're kind of looking at holistically of how we're handling these items. And, you know, a list of capital projects that we have before us, you know, the FY25 budget season. So let's start with ARPA. I think there was some information in your packet. And we have one request in from the school department. So Beth, I don't know if you want to take it from there?
Sure. So as Rich mentioned, we have a request in front of us that came in from the school department in December for $80,000 to make a stage rigging system operable at Winchester High School. And then the other item that I wanted to talk about with respect to ARPA is the current state of the Mystic School heating system. So I invited Pete and Nick to come in if there were any questions from the board. But I think we've talked in the past few meetings. I think you had a memo from Pete at one of the last meetings about the condition of the heating system, which has deteriorated significantly this winter to the extent that, you know, DPW is there, I would say, daily trying to get the building to a, I don't want to say comfortable temperature because I don't think it's comfortable, but to a reasonable temperature. You know, we have town staff who's working in that building. There's also a, you know, a part of the space is rented out to the Kids' Corner After-School Program. There's a preschool, after-school programs, probably somewhere around 500 to 600 families that service, are serviced by the after-school and other programs run at the rec center. So, you know, I don't have any specific presentation material related to it, but I think I would be asking the board to look at allocating some money for design in the near term, and then looking to potentially set aside some funds for construction from the ARPA money so that we'll be able to complete repairs to that building and have it be in a safe condition for the kids and the staff who work there.
So can we have Pete come up and give us a 101?
Yeah. Pete and Nick, come on up. And I think, you know, this isn't a new recommendation by staff?
No, no.
On our last couple of meetings, it was at the Budget Summit. It was listed as, you know, staff's recommendation that we use ARPA money to fund this. So why don't we hear technically first from Pete what's going on with the system? And maybe, Nick, you can put, you know, we had an email in our packet that you sent recently, but you've kind of been living the situation and kind of represent your staff here tonight that certainly have weathered the storm, no pun intended, but certainly, you know, have had trying, some trying situations in the morning especially, so.
So can I ask a few questions to set this up?
Sure. Go ahead.
So Pete, can you dumb this down as far as like explain what the heating system is? Is it a steam heating system, and it's got traps, and it's like radiators? Or, and then we can sort of visualize what's failing and why it's immediate versus something that couldn't be delayed? Because I think there's a lot of questions about, from people, hey, this could wait a year or two years. And then, Nick, I'd like to know how many families, Winchester families are actually impacted by this. It would be inconvenient if the system fails, and they'll have to find other locations for their children while the system gets repaired. So.
Yep. So, great. Thank you. The Mystic Building was built in the 20s, so you have a 100-year-old steam system in the majority of the building. The upper level is an addition that was built in the 50s, but it was all married into that original system. The controls are pneumatics, they're original to the building as well. That's an ancient technology now. It's difficult to find people that are actually capable of working with it. The issues that we are starting to experience that are of most concern is, from my standpoint, and a catastrophic failure, are steam leaks that are starting to happen throughout in the piping. And the piping is wrapped in asbestos insulation. What we're finding is at this point in time, and it's like this year, it feels like we dropped off a cliff with the amount of problems that we're having related to that and other failures. So the threads for the pipes that are threaded together, they're pretty much rotting within themselves. So the steam pipes start running water wherever they are, they're asbestos-covered pipes. We have to stop what, you know, what's going on in the area, close it off, call in the state, try and get an emergency waiver, get an asbestos worker to come in, move it. A lot of times, we'll have to vacate people out of the building. We try, we haven't had any issues yet where there's any pipes that are in people's areas, but they're above spaces. So that's what's failing for the steam. The pneumatic controls, as I said, they're antiquated. We have no drawings on them anymore. We've brought some people in to try and get them back on track, see if there's anything we can really do with that to try and moderate the system. But what we're actually relying on now was what's called a heat timer system that was added to the boiler on one of our energy efficiency ventures and added some valves to the big steam lines. And that modulates the boiler more than we are working with individual thermostats being capable of up and down. Recently, though, we were trying to figure out why we lost heat to the newer portion, which was from the 50s. There were a myriad of issues where the condensate float in the condensate tank was hanging up. And a switch, electric to pneumatic switch that operated, that had failed. There was a steam trap further down, and just a number of things that took a team of people to go through the whole building last Friday to at least get us to where we were able to bring those, which usually we're fighting overheating in the building. Now we couldn't come to temperature for all the classes that needed to be done. We've got them back up to an acceptable level for right now, but we can't, we don't want to take it any further right now until we have time to start fresh in the morning, take some things off, start trying to work through the pneumatics. But everything in there is, you know, you're throwing good money after a failing system. And like you said, we did think that we had a little more time to develop this project, but we're there all the time. I'm spending tons of resource. Our guys go there every morning to check the building out. We're constantly there fielding leaks and cold complaints. And it's time to do something. Like you said, this year, it really has fallen off the cliff, it seems like, so.
So Nick, can you tell us about how many families are there, and the hours are there, and who you serve and so forth?
So as Beth mentioned earlier, we're building a split between the rec department and a vendor who runs Kids' Corner. Between the two after-school programs, which happen as soon as school gets out until 6:00 p.m. each day, there's upwards of 250 kids in the building for after-school childcare. On top of that, we have Kids' Connection, which is the Recreation Department's preschool program. We have about 60 kids a day in that program. Additionally, the building is used for a multitude of enrichment programs. We offer two to three different ones every single day, Monday through Friday. The numbers vary, it could be up to 75 kids a day. These are all Winchester families. Additionally, we use the gym for all different types of things, especially this time of year, we have rec basketball out of there. So we have another 50, 60 kids alone in that program. The concern for me is if, we did have a catastrophic failure, and the building did shut down. I mean, we know in Winchester, the demand is way higher than the supply in terms of childcare and places for kids to go that are safe while the parents are at work. And 260 families being out of that, in addition to the 60 preschool kids, would be catastrophic. There's no backup buildings in town. Parkhurst is being used as swing space, there's really nowhere to bring them. So that's a huge issue. And on top of that, it's a real morale downer when you get into a cold building, and you don't know what you're getting into. And I'm spending, you know, hours and hours every single day on trying to figure out the heat, working with Pete. Staff has been fantastic. Like you said, they're there all the time, but it's kind of beating us up. And it's been cold, and it's definitely something that's been difficult to deal with this year. And like Pete said, it fell off a cliff this year. It's hard to catch up.
How cold is it?
There's been days in some of the outer rooms where it's in the 40s until we can get the heat, supplemental heaters going and whatnot. So that's not the whole building. On the other side of the building, it can be 75. It's so inconsistent. We have staff in some rooms, it's pumping almost 80, and there's no escape of the heat. You're like in a sauna. So there's windows that are getting cracked to get some fresh air. And then on the other side of the building, we can't get heat in there. And it can be as low as 45 when we get in the morning until we get supplemental heaters going and other ways to get the building to a safe temperature. Otherwise, we have to move programs. We've had to move the preschool program out of their rooms into other rooms, which isn't, if anyone has ever taught preschool, leaving a preschool room into an after-school childcare room is a recipe for disaster, not only for the staff but for the kids. So it's been difficult.
And I foresee on Wednesday, us having to be there to figure out what we can do to react to it going from freezing to 50 degrees. So we'll be challenged with that, too, just until we get into a more sustained cold pattern. That's also been difficult to get the building up, down, and try and make it run.
Pete, there's a comment made at our Budget Summit on Friday that, you know, the temperature dropping low, not that low, but it's by design. Is that how the system's designed?
No. So the original pneumatic system doesn't look like it even had a night setback on it, but it's being modulated by the heat timer. The heat timer has the ability to do some modulation of the boiler for energy reasons, but we haven't been thinking about that at all. You know, everything's pegged to try and get heat, keep the building hot at night. Normally, with the Energy Committee in a regular building, we'd be looking for a 60-degree night setback and, you know, 68-degree temperature. But that hasn't even, you know, we don't, we can't pinpoint those, so we just try to get the heat there.
How long is it taking in those classrooms to get up to temperature in the morning?
Well, if we get in on those frigid days, sometimes it doesn't get up until, you know, we have people there working on it and getting it. It could take until noon time, so that's when we have to move kids.
Preschoolers are headed home already.
Yeah. And so we're already moving the kids into other areas, using the gym more often than we would. So, yeah, it does take a while sometimes. Some days are better than others. So what is, if there was funding, what would be the plan? Pete, I don't know if you can?
So first thing that I would say is if we could get the original request for under $50,000 for design, You know, that estimate that was early on in the capital semi been proved by our, um, uh, study that we had through, uh, rise engineering as an arm of the, uh, utilities. We did the electrification analysis. Once we got into that, we could get a better idea of what the schedule would be. I also, because then that had nothing to do with the asbestos abatement portion of it, reached out to a consultant we work with all the time to say, how long would it take to, uh, take the building down and empty it? Once we got into more of the design, understanding where they're going to run equipment, you might be able to get a tighter schedule. But right now it would be, uh, a solid two to three weeks to abate the building, then start the project. So I would say give it, give money for engineering now. Uh, within two weeks, we could have an RFP on the street. Then a month, we could probably have a designer, uh, and from there, probably another month and a half. I said, we could be in a bidding cycle by, by May, I would say. You know, and that would put us in, in, uh, if we move forward with a bid into a summer bidding cycle. As a, as a, as a tight one, until we develop the project, we don't know if ductwork, if, if, if a lot of material has to be moved before equipment can go in, if they can do half the building while people work there. Those are the type of things you could tighten it up. But, uh, duration of, uh, a project in there, I would say probably be three months to do the whole thing.
Do you have any preliminary numbers of what it would cost to do the construction?
So preliminary number for the construction itself is, is one point three. Add asbestos abatement, there's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars rough number. Then we haven't really gotten into a full understanding if the electrical, uh, main to the building would have, the, would have to be upgraded. So don't really have a number for that. But the average might be there, but I know the distribution throughout the building is, is old and bad. So, uh, the electrical number is kind of an iffy number right now that, but we were looking at one point five for the project off, you know. And that's without including any potential rebates or incentives that I'm sure there would be, uh, significant ones available.
Any grant money available on your side, Nick?
Um, we, we could talk about some grant money being available for sure. Uh, there's the C three childcare grant money that can go into stuff like infrastructure. There could be some other, other avenues as well, but, uh, in terms of what we have right now on the table, we do have some money in our C three grant funding.
And Pete, I think you mentioned this in one of our earlier capital meetings, you'd be looking to do air source heat pumps. Is that the, at this point, the working assumption around the, the heating source?
Yes.
And hence all the electrical stuff that needs to be.
Right. The cassettes all the way down the line, all the distribution needs.
Um, I'm looking at, Pete, your memo from, um, December, I guess, or November, December. Um, that potentially there's a, so a green communities grant that the town's eligible for that might be.
So annually, the town, we get a hundred thousand dollars from Green Communities, which, working with the Energy Committee, we, we capture every year. There is a, uh, a potential for a five hundred thousand dollar grant where you forego so many years of the hundred grand pool. It, it's there.
Yep.
Uh, can't put it into that until we know if that is the direction we're going and what the, the cycle is. But, uh, that's, that's out there.
What would be the, the timeline for construction if it was this summer? Would we have to not do any summer, um, programs there? I mean, I, I, Nick had mentioned that there's not really any space for kids if the building would shut down. I mean, I assume that that's until, until Lynch is finished, I, I don't know if there's any place for those summer programs to go.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know about, I know that the building would have to be vacated.
Yep.
And we're talking about three months probably for comfort's sake, for asbestos abatement and get, you know, get it up and running. So.
So.
Three months?
I would say totally with the worst case scenario for construction, waiting for materials, uh, I, I, it's, it's a crystal ball right now, you know.
Do you think it needs to be vacated for the full duration or certainly for the abatement period, which is a couple of weeks, right? But can, I mean, and obviously we need to get an engineer on board to kind of talk through details. But do you think we could be a phased construction for the rest of the work?
I, I don't really see it happening because of the fact all the electrical has been, everything out there. You won't have your, uh, return air. You won't have air exchange. You won't have the air conditioning in these rooms. I, until it's really built and we can look and see where their plant would look at running ductwork or where they would put equipment or what the, uh, amount of maybe chillers they put, one, couple, I, it, I don't know.
The, the, the best time to do it for the rec department and also for Kids Corner, who I've had discussions with, would be this summer because there is a little bit more space in the schools, uh, depending on what they're, they're utilizing the schools for. I know they, uh, you, last year they kind of solidified most of their stuff at, uh, the high school, leaving some of the other schools not as busy. So it'd be a discussion we'd have to have with school, the school department. Pete and I are meeting with Andrew Mayer and talk about summer stuff next week. So we might have a better idea on if there would be any available space in the summer to house a couple of programs.
Just going also back to, you know, how much time do I think? I can only say that when we did Morocco School, we did that in a summer and that is probably a twenty thousand square foot bigger building. Uh, and, and there was a lot of abatement and, uh, you know, full equipment replacement. So that fit within a summer. It was tight, but.
This project has been in the capital queue for a while and, um, I appreciate DPW's been, um, kind of keeping everything going for a long time. But, um, I, um, I don't know. The engineering seems like something that just is, should be easy for us to move forward anyways. Um, and see if the timeline works for the schools. It's their building. So I, you know, it's kind of up to them, I guess. If we get the engineering going, how they figure out the when of, you know, everything else and also the energy grant. Um, five, it seemed, I would be in favor of applying the full energy grant, the five hundred K at the outset, if that's the next step for us to find the construction money.
So I would even go a step further, um, because I, I think I've been, I feel like I've, I've heard a lot about this in the last couple of months. Um, you know, I think as Mike you pointed out accurately, this has been in the capital queue for a while. Um, it's, um, you know, a project that, you know, has been on the radar and certainly, um, you know, as, as Pete has said, kind of really taken a turn for the worse, uh, this season. Uh, and given how our rec department is blossoming, uh, you know, it's great to hear you have a waiting list for after school programs. Uh, your preschool is fully enrolled almost, or isn't fully enrolled.
Close, yeah.
Um, and, um, you know, enrichment programs, my kids do the direct league basketball. Um, you know, it's a vibrant building and, you know, I went to a coaches meeting for third grade basketball over there one night, you know, early December, and the place was hopping. Uh, it was full of life. And, you know, to hear, you know, these stories, um, and, you know, this, um, you know, how this is, you know, potentially affecting the operations as we're trying to build our rec department up, um, is, is, is disappointing. And I think we can do something about it. Um, and certainly, you know, we need, you know, you know, as Mike pointed out, it's a school building. Uh, so certainly, you know, it would have to be, you know, with the approval of the school committee. But I don't see why we can't set aside, you know, the ARPA money now for design and construction to have a funding source identified for this project because I think it's a priority and we need to strike when we can. Um, with ARPA, we just have to have a contract committed by the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, so certainly if this summer didn't work for the work, if it was too tight, you know, whether, you know, with, you know, um, the school situation, then certainly that would allow them, you know, to plan for the following summer to do the work. So my, my goal and, and my hope would be that someone would make a motion that we set aside the one point six million, uh, to do, uh, the, um, design and construction and send that over to a memo to the school committee. Authorized myself with staff's assistance to draft a memo to the school department. Uh, certainly happy to go to the school committee meeting, um, you know, that this funding is available to do, uh, this project. Um, and we're seeking their authorization to, to move ahead and plan it and have everyone work together to get it done either this summer or the following summer. Um, because I think it's that important. I mean, this is, you know, you know, this is a big part of our community. Uh, when my kids were little, they went to the rec department after school. We're two, two income working family. You know, my kid got on the bus, went there. Um, you know, it serves a very, um, big population of this town and it's important. And I, I can't imagine a catastrophic failure of this program. That's my take. Uh, and I know probably I spoke out of turn, but I feel that strongly about it.
So I'll make a motion, uh, that we appropriate a million six from ARPA for design, engineering and construction of, uh, he, uh, heating system for Mystic School. Is that right? Did I leave anything out?
Well, I think it would be, uh, contingent on school committee.
Yes.
Um, authorizing the work to go forward.
What he said.
Yeah, no, no. Contingent upon.
I guess my question is, you know, I mean, this is, um, a, a lot all at once. So we really just received this information. We don't have really any information on costs or anything. I mean, I certainly am for moving forward quickly with the project, but looking at applying the five hundred thousand dollar energy grant, uh, potentially, you know, even asking for, you know, town meeting, um, you know, uh, approval for, you know, free cash transfer. I mean, I think that they're just, um, we have limited ARPA funds left. And, um, I think typically they've been well used for things that are outside of the capital process that otherwise might not get funded. Um, this will get funded, certainly engineering and design, uh, by us tonight. Um, but I think it's also something that's very likely to get funded by town meeting.
From free cash?
Um, I, I don't know. Yeah, for, through the capital process. I, I don't know. I mean, it, it's been in the capital queue for a while. I mean, I, so.
Rich's point.
Yeah. No, no, I'm just saying that it's, if we're funding the.
Flames out, what are we going to tell five hundred families?
I, I understand, John. I'm with you. I'm saying that we need to do it. I'm just saying, I don't know why tonight we have to approve all of the money when we don't even have anything, you know, in front of us to show us what the costs are and what the plan is. And the schools haven't even been involved in the discussion.
Right. And as Rich said, this is subject to the school committee's approval. So I'm, I'm totally fine with that. But I don't think these numbers are new. This has been on here for quite some time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Mike. I'd rather do two hundred thousand for this engineering and design today. We want to commit, we have to commit ARPA, but I want to see what the energy cost or the design comes in at. Um, you know, we could commit up to some amount of ARPA, but I don't want to tie it all up on January eighth. I understand we have to use it all by December, but I'd rather tonight commit to engineering and design. Let's consume what that is. Let's understand and pursue. If we're going to get the energy grant, the five hundred K, would we have, would we know that by June? Would we get that in July? If it frees up ARPA money because we have an offset of grant, I don't want to be in a position of scrambling in July to find the next ARPA project. I'd rather have some of those things stacked up. So I'm in favor of two hundred thousand dollars in ARPA and engineering tonight. I'm in favor of this entire project being done, and if it has to be ARPA. But I'm also in favor of let's understand C three grants, energy grants and anything else and the actual cost for what we're trying to do. So that's where I am.
So Nick, how much is in the C three grant? Is it nickels or is it substantial?
No, it's, uh, on the spot. We probably have about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the account right now.
But what do you use that for though?
It's used for anything that's related to childcare programs, which could be anything from infrastructure, capital, supplies, materials, staffing.
Kind of stuff.
Bonuses, you name it, it can be done underneath the, uh, childcare umbrella. And since Mystic is part of our childcare facility, it qualifies. And we've used it for a multitude of things at the, at the facility, including, uh, things at the sport court. We put in new doors, new security systems. We do use it for, you know, quite a bit of upgrades at the, at the facility. We spent a good amount so far and we continually get allocations every month. Um, right now we're getting about eighteen thousand dollars a month, so it's going to continue to grow. So there, so when I say there is an opportunity to give some towards to offset the cost.
Right.
Um, it's only promised for the end of this fiscal year. Um, but the, uh, the governor seems to be committed to giving back to, to childcare. So hopefully that continues. And we continue to collect on, on that every year.
So Beth, do you know, uh, from Ken, how long it takes to, or from the Energy Committee, uh, how long it takes to get these grants?
Pete probably has more experience with the timeline.
Time you submit your application?
Is there one application process a year or is it?
One, yeah. I'm not familiar at all really with the, with the bigger grant one. But usually I think it's October that we have to submit by. I, I'm, I don't remember.
So we need to find out the time and that's, that was my concern, Michelle. It was that we have a conversation four months from now and we spent the money someplace else. And now we might go to town meeting in May and ask for it, or we might not. And we may use free cash for a whole bunch of capital items. Or we might use it to bu- balance part of the budget. And then the money's not available for this and then now you're spending your full time there.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's my concern is that this, you know, it would be nice to have a project pool of money that we know we can get this done. Like every other ARPA project we've done, if there are other ways to fund it, we have been successful in finding those ways to fund it and that money goes back in. And to your, Michelle, to your point, I think we would know that in time, certainly in order to spend the money, especially when we're talking, you know, of not millions, but probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we can certainly have, you know, a list together of, of projects we can, we can get done relatively quickly. Um, I just think this is too big of a project. And, and after my experience at the last town meeting where I stood up there, you know, defending, you know, a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, of, uh, engineering work, um, and, and taking a lot of shots, to be quite honest with you. Um, you know, I don't have much faith, you know, that a project of this magnitude, you know, is going to, you know, fly through town meeting. I think there'll be questions, um, you know, and, you know, there's certainly a lot of, you know, we have a large list. Um, you know, I just, I, this is too important. I think it just needs to be wrapped up, have a, a pool of money set aside and start your process. And, you know, certainly send it over to the schools, get their, you know, approval. Um, and, um, you know, we kind of go from there. Uh, and certainly as it develops, if there's money we can pull back, we can pull it back. But I just, it's too important.
What would, what would be the timeline if we, um, appropriate a hundred fifty thousand of ARPA for the design to know the total estimated project cost?
Um, I think by May, if, if we got it soon, I think by May we'd have some, some good numbers.
Because I wonder if we, I mean, it seems like we could say we do a hundred fifty thousand now, we one sort of hold like that ARPA money until we have a better understanding of what else is available. And then we come back with an analysis of the green community grants, um, whether there's room in the C three funding, like just a, a better understanding of, of what the additional sources are prior to putting all of, it, because it's essentially the rest of the remaining ARPA funds that we have at this point. Um, and that if, you know, we get the estimate back and we get a better understanding, we get an understanding of is the green community, are we eligible for this grant or not, um, then we can also have just a more informed decision about the, the ARPA spending. Because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this ARPA, you know, this chart that we have and there's, you know, a number of places where we are rescinding money to some point on what we've allocated to ARPA. Um, but it, you know, we've lived in a world of a lot of uncertainty for the past several years. Um, that seems like maybe we should just have a little bit more information before we put the remainder of the ARPA funding.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is you're going to miss, you know, fall, you're going to miss spring town meeting. So if there's, if you, if you're looking to do a free cash allocation or something to that extent, you're going to be at fall town meeting. Um, and that means we're going to go through another season, definitely with the system. Uh, and I don't, I'm not sure what that will bring.
I'm not sure. We have an assessment of the other sources. We can have an assessment of the other sources before.
And we'll, and we may have some, we may have a warrant that we can hold. We can have a placeholder for spring town meeting and Pete can give us some early returns on, it's going to be eight hundred grand for this and three hundred grand for that. I think by the time fall town meeting rolls around and we don't do financial articles until the first Monday in May, we could have a warrant article in April, whenever the warrant closes. We could have a, a motion that doesn't have numbers in it. I'm not, I'm trying to avoid town meeting. I'm not trying to go to town meeting. I'm just trying to understand what is it going to cost before we commit all of it in January.
So you'd rather, you'd rather a free cash allocation for this project?
I wouldn't. I'm not suggesting we need to go to, to town meeting, but I'd much rather understand what the cost is. And if we wanted to go to town meeting with free cash or if we, if it was capital stabilization, we'd put some money at it. We would at least be able to tell the story of what the project is. Or we do it all with ARPA. I want to do the project. I just don't want us to commit every last dollar on January eighth. So.
I guess, I just, I guess I'm not following your logic. So you don't want to use a free cash allegation.
No, I'd rather.
But you don't want to commit ARPA.
Correct. I want to, I want to understand grants, like Anthea said, what grants do we have to offset the costs that we don't know? When we understand what that is, there's the cost, there's the known grants. It might be some portion of C3. There's a potential grant of energy. There might be some other incentives. Net, net, how much do we need? If it's ARPA, I'd, I'd be happy to use ARPA and not use a dime of free cash. If capital stabilization has money, let's understand what capital's going to use it for. But let's understand if we have grants and let's understand we're going to apply it against a, a cost that's a cost certain. That's all I'm trying to say. I'm happy to use ARPA. I just don't want to commit it all tonight.
So I, 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 I understand that. I guess I just want to get this in a, a tight timeframe because things just flow around like a helium balloon and then we're talking about a year from now. And like, I look at the families that are going to be disrupted and my daughter, 35, has two kids in Winchester who are in preschool. And her daycare situation for the providers, the national chain, has been unable to staff there. And, and she's been out of work for almost a month last year. So if this thing blows up and 60 families have to come up with other daycare arrangements, it's going to be extremely disruptive to the taxpayers. So that's who I serve. And so I'm like, okay, so how are we going to address this? So it's not disruptive and how do we plan for it? So if we're going to, and I, I'd just like some agreement that we're going to reserve some amount of ARPA money aside from the 150 or 200,000 for engineering for this project. I agree with looking into all these and we can go with the timeline, all these other sources of funding. But you know, what we turn, you know, what's likelihood they turn into reality? Or if we can't use them on this project, can we use them on another project? I'm not, I'm, it's not that I want to spend all of ARPA money down on something. I don't want to spend it to die by a thousand cuts of $80,000 for something for the plays at the, at the high school. I think it's a great cause. My daughter was a theater major there at the high school, whatever. But this is a tangible asset that needs to be repaired. And so that, that's where, and I'm a little impassioned about it, but I'm really thinking about the disruption to the user.
The other thing, Michelle, is that, you know, is that, you know, there are, this is step one of about step seven in the sense that we need to go to the school committee and say, look, this funding is available. We have it earmarked, you know, will you authorize the work? I mean, that's, you know, as, as, as John says, I, I mean, I think it's a tight timeframe. Whether it's this summer, you know, it can be pulled off, even better if asked to wait till next summer, you know, that's unfortunate, but you know, at some point we need to. I, I just feel like we just kick around lists and, and, and I get it and it's an academic exercise and there's analysis that goes into it. But, you know, these are, being one of them years ago, you know, I couldn't think of what would happen if rec had to shut down and my, we lost our daycare. I mean, my wife's a teacher. I have my own business, you know, I don't know what we would do. So I think at the very least, to John's point, we need to say this mark, this money is set aside. And, you know, we're going to do this, we're committed to do this project. We're going to do it with ARPA. You know, we're going to send it over to the school committee. We're going to ask for their authorization. And if we can, you know, use grant money, great. If we can find other funding sources, even better. But I think there needs to be a commitment from this board that we're going to address this problem in the near term and get this done. And going to town meeting, you know, waiting till May, waiting to the fall town meeting, you know, I just, to me, that's not, that's not being responsive. And so, you know, I guess initially John had made a motion. I didn't know, I didn't ask for a second yet because I wanted to have discussion, but you know, that's kind of where I fall on this.
So I, I think, can we ask, and I don't know if it's CPW, if it's Ken or sustainability, if it's others on staff, can we say by either the 22nd or the 5th that we have an assessment of available funding sources for this and revisit the discussion at that point because I, I think it's hard. I, I understand the timeline and the process and needing school committee approval. But I think it's really challenging to say there's other stuff out there. Let's put all of ARPA to this without, without really knowing what that means. And I would rather look at the available funding and get a better picture of what it means to say there, there are other sources that might be available that we could use before we should fully commit to ARPA money. If those sources are not available, if we look at it and those sources are not available, then I think we should move forward and get it done. But I, it's hard to make a decision when we just don't know what, what else is out there.
That's fair.
How about I work with Beth on that?
The only thing I would say is, I think, can we vote the design money?
Yes.
To start that process tonight?
Yeah, no problem.
And I, and I think like, I mean, if we say that comes back on the 22nd. It's a difference. If it comes back on the 22nd, then we don't make any other decisions on ARPA until we see that, but that's our next meeting.
And so that would be, 22nd seems a, a little bit short, but I mean, it's happy to be as.
Well, I'll put it on.
Consider it done.
I'll put it, I'll put it, I'll put, I'll put it on the agenda and John, if you get it done.
We're going to get it done. There's no question, right?
My question is, you know, with the, with the energy grant and that information, right? I mean, I, I don't know what the cycle is. I mean, so if we can get that, all that information and just have a strategy, right? How much, you know, Nick has, we don't want to take every dollar from Nick that he's been counting on, right? So we've got to figure out, um, is it realistic to take some of that C3 money? Is it, you know, realistic to get $500,000 for the energy grant from that, that three year cycle? And that's, that's all we're looking for. So, and going to the schools and see what they say. It may be that they can't do it this summer, right? Maybe they just say it's not possible for us and next summer, but we can still look for a funding source.
Right. So we can still plan it forward.
But we could still use ARPA. We just have to have a contract executed by the end of 2024.
We get it. We get it.
So, so is there a motion for that?
Motion to allocate up to 150,000 of ARPA funds to support.
Engineering.
Engineering for the Mystic School Heating System.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And you want to pose, that passes. So we'll put this on the agenda for the 22nd of January. And John, you'll work with staff on getting us.
Yes.
Some type of update. And maybe we, how people feel about reaching out to the schools now, or do you want to wait? Just saying that this is, you know, at our table. I mean, it's not, we talked about it a little bit at the budget summit.
It means they're building, so I mean, we should be, you know, we're just kind of reversing the order of how we normally do things, right?
Well, that's why I'm saying, so that's why I'm saying, I think maybe we should go to the schools now.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think that would have, should have been the first step to begin with. I mean, to, to blindside them with this.
No, we did, first of all, we brought up at the budget summit.
Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
They haven't been blindsided. The chair of the school committee has been on these emails back and forth since early November. I mean, I've said to me.
We, we don't have visibility. You know, I'm just hearing about this as well, right? So a lot of you.
You're not just hearing about this, Mike. Mike, we talked about this three meetings, at least four meetings.
Right, but I mean, it's since December.
When did you present the capital plan?
In, in October 30th.
Yeah, it was on, at that point. We talked about it that day too.
I understand. I think that these emergent issues have been recently, right? It started at the beginning of December, right? And now it's the beginning of January. So again, I'm committed to the project. I don't think that we need to say that one person cares about the kids in the building more than another. I don't think that's necessary. We're obligated to this project. It's what we're going to do. We need to be good stewards of our resources and that's what we're doing, right? I mean, again, we don't all have to say, oh, my kids went there. My daughter Grace was working there today, right, Nick? Probably saw her floating around. Yeah. So I mean, like.
She was sweater on?
She did. She's, she's on the hot side of the building though, right? So that's what she complains about to me.
Gasping by the window.
So.
Or the tank top.
You'll be sticker Nicole aside, Nick. It's all right.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, I just want to ask, it, it sounds like there's been a plan and there's daily working on this, but like, are there, is there anything else that's needed to make it? Like it was pretty, it was pretty cold this morning. I know it's going to be 50 degrees on, like it's a wild ride, but like what's going to happen as we hit?
So we are trying to, we're putting together some stop gaps to see if, you know, there are things that can, can mitigate some of it, but you know, I'm getting pricing on, say putting a, a couple of mini splits down at the cold end. Problem two is that there's no electrical capability, so probably getting the electrical to him is going to cost as much as the project. But I'm getting pricing on that. We brought out a, a window company and weatherproofing person to look at that big gable window and give us some options. I know we had put forward a, a design for windows for there, but maybe there's something we can present. Either short term or just look at that area that, a window, the, you know, a, a window person like that just come and put a storefront in it or cover it with insulation. We're looking at all those things right now as, as, as mitigating, but they're, they're ugly, but.
So I, I think it's premature to have this conversation, but if it turns out that this project is getting kicked down the road till summer of 2025, we're going to have to have a conversation about what needs to happen to get us through next winter and whether there's some, you know, short-term funding that needs to be allocated to put those mini splits in, upgrade some of the electrical, that type of stuff, because I don't think we can just rely on the system kind of chugging through another winter season as it is.
And that's only in response to the immediate problem right now, not the other stuff that will pop up or problems. This is just about two cold rooms.
Is there risk of pipes freezing, issues that might come up with water if it's, if we're having like a week of.
Well, a, a, anytime we, if we'd have, have a, a complete failure, right now we have steam moving through the pipes. Building's warm, not right now, but if we have, if we ever have a failure where it's down, it's too cold out, we, we risk that with any heat loss in a building, so.
So who's going to reach out to the school committee?
I was just going to ask that. So is everyone okay with me reaching out to Tom Upcroft and getting that before them? Just telling him and representing that, you know, this board's committed to doing this project as, you know, as, as timely as possible. You know, and that, you know, you know, we're looking at funding options and.
Yes, I, I just don't think that doing nothing is really an option. Right?
None of us think that.
Yeah. No, I know. That's all right. So that's, that'd be the message that is like.
All the things we have to do, we'll just do them as quickly as we can. So if it's the school committee, you know, don't, there's, we don't need to take a vote on or anything. All the things, I think we all agree just to move forward with everything, talk enough rank, whatever needs to be done. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Doesn't feel that way, Mike. I gotta be honest.
What doesn't feel that way?
It doesn't feel that way. You know, when we talk about the urgency of this project and we, you know, John makes a motion and then we discuss it and, you know, you start talking about, you know, you know, free cash allocations, going to town meeting, you know, looking at other funding sources. I can certainly appreciate the fiscal responsibilities that we have, but, you know, it, it just doesn't seem, you know, you know, I just, I, it just doesn't seem that it's, it's an urgent matter to some of the board members. And that's why, you know, certainly, you know, we're trying to get, at least I'm trying to get that message across. So certainly when we started the discussion, it didn't feel that way.
Mike, having said all that, I just think I get your point.
Thank you.
More, more work needs to be done before we can come to final decision. So. Point won't take.
Yeah, I guess. Appreciate it.
Yep.
I appreciate it very much. Yeah. We, whatever we can do to expedite it in the right way for everybody.
We'll be in touch.
It'll be good. Nick, Nick does a great job up there and one of the byproducts of the heat pumps is he'll have air conditioning in spaces, which will help him further revenue in the summers.
Yep. Good. We'll have a solution.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So this was a discussion about ARPA. So there's certainly the curtain memo from the school department. That's an $80,000 request. And I think that, is this the original ARPA list that came in? That you included in our package?
We had done a few requests. The former town manager had done a request prior to her leaving in 2021. And then when I came on board as acting town manager, we did another round of requests, which is what led to this.
So was this value engineered out? Is that what happened? Was this value engineered out?
The Mystic School?
No.
Project?
The curtain.
Oh, I, I, I don't know any history as to this.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So what else do we want to talk about for ARPA tonight? I mean, like I said, we have the school request and we.
National championship too.
Not, not just anything on your mind, just somewhat near the.
Just kidding you guys. A little levity. We needed it.
Yeah, no, it's good.
I, I mean, besides the memo, I asked for more information on this. I didn't get anything back, so I don't know. I mean, Dr. Hackett submitted this. I don't know if anybody's got the backstory of what this is or why it's here, how it got to this point. You know, what else is at the high school that wasn't included in the project that they're going to be looking for funding for? I mean, since I've been here, we've done drainage at the back. We're looking at a gymnasium. We're looking at fixing concrete, piers. You know, is there anything else that wasn't included in the renovation that they're going to be looking for funding for? Is that a complete list? Are things just popping up? Anyone know about this?
I mean, I knew, I remember when it was cut out of the project way back when and it was, you know, kind of a big deal because it's, I, I don't understand what it is, to be honest with you, but I trust that if it, you know, comes from the superintendent and it's relatively speaking not, you know, a, a, a huge number, but, you know, it, it seems like it's somewhat consistent with some of the numbers that we've, I don't have in front of me that we've rescinded some, from some of the other projects lately, right? That have come back with costs being lower or whatnot. So I don't mind it. I don't, I don't know what else. I don't think they've got anything else coming in that I'm aware of, but I don't know.
Are people okay with just maybe getting a little bit more information about this?
No, I'd just like to know what, maybe they have to move, maybe they can't use certain props over there because they don't have the right equipment. So they use, I don't know, it's harder to move the sets. It's more dangerous. I don't know what it is. You know, I think it's, I think it's from an enrichment standpoint, it's great. I just want to know more about it.
And I guess we can learn more about it, but I'm, I'm not inclined to spend ARPA on this. I'll just say that right now. I mean, I think there's, I, I get that there's a need and there's an enrichment need and it would be useful for shows that we all go to, but I think there's some, we've been, been making investment in ARPA on things like, you know, studying things, fixing things, shoring up things. I think I'd rather see a more pressing infrastructure need for $80,000. So let's get what we can, but I'm not inclined to support this expenditure at this time. So I could change my mind, but.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's where I'm at right now.
Well, I would say I just said when we were talking about the last piece of ARPA, let's not allocate ARPA funds until we talk more about the heating system. So I'm, I.
Give you true to your word.
Now stick with that. I mean, the other thing is like, we've talked about a community needs projects fund. And like preliminarily, preliminarily, when I spoke with Stacy about this was that the, the best way to administer that would be projects that are like a specific thing, for lack of any eloquent words, a, a specific thing or expenditure and not like an ongoing program or project that like potentially this is the. Traditionally, maybe we could, you know, put in parameters that something like this could be presented by the performing arts as a grant request.
So the 300,000 that we've earmarked?
Yes. Just a, just a thought of like what.
Could you support that?
Maybe.
Where are we at?
We are at Stacy and I get to have an in-depth discussion on how to actually.
Do it.
All right. I just, from a timing standpoint too.
Cause they need to be allocated by December 2024.
Yeah. So we may want to get moving on that process.
Yeah, I mean, I see ARPA too as, you know, an opportunity for us to fund things that otherwise might not get funded through the capital process or from, you know, other funding options. And so that's why, you know, I like that we're setting aside money for the community requests and, and I don't mind ones coming in like this. But, you know, there's. the community requests and I don't mind ones coming in like this, but you know, there's an endless amount of these kinds of things. So we just have to decide which ones are important and why. But it absolutely makes make sense to get more information on it. So again, I still don't know what it is. I thought John would know what it is, but
I know.
He's like, I was once Peter Pan. I could fly.
All right. Is there anything else for ARPA? So try to get more information on that. Thank you. Anything else for ARPA?
No. Well, not yet. Coming up.
All right. Moving on, capital planning update. So John and Michelle, you've been working on this?
We've been sweating out big. Yes, we have.
Where are we at?
So we looked through this list of projects that will look very familiar to you. And we were assessing through reading reports and speaking with town staff, trying to understand what were immediate needs and what aren't. And so, and we're not, obviously not the authority on that. But what we came to was we need to still do some more digging to understand what, like we're taking a field trip Wednesday.
Yes, we are.
To understand the situation more. So we're not in a position to recommend anything for a debt exclusion override for capital purposes this evening. It's not that it couldn't come up, but it's just from a timing standpoint, we won't be ready for March because we think, much like with the Mystic School heating system, we have a lot more questions that need answers in order to feel that we can go to the public with an override request and have fully vetted everything. Now, I understand the question's gonna come up. Okay, so how are we gonna fund all this? And this is where Michelle comes in. And it's, and I think part of it is a shorter term plan, which are projects that need to be done in the next one to two years and something that may be looking out on a further basis. Then in the back of our minds, and Michelle, I'll finish my diatribe here and then please jump in, is we think about how the finance committee looks at the capital planning process and some of the things that they would like to see over a longer term and how we incorporate the two of them together. But we recognize that we need to take like a jump on a bunch of projects and then ease into the FinCom approach potentially. So Michelle, is you want to?
That, that sounds like what we talked about. And it's not a diatribe at all. So I think the idea of a question and a number in February before the warrant closes, I think that's a no. What I do think is that we can look at, and so we have John, we talked about this at the budget summit last week. What are some of the projects in the building stabilization, capital stabilization fund that maybe could raise up to pay for a Lincoln chiller? If we have money out of energy grant at Mystic School, so we don't need to use ARPA, let's fund something at Lincoln and site work. There's borrowing capacity in the capital stabilization, building stabilization funds that they don't want to exceed 50%. But by going up 10% to 60%, you've got two more million dollars that could go toward, again, towards some of these more immediate needs. So this isn't, we're never gonna try to solve for all of these projects that John has on the list, but I think for some that are in the short-term Mystic School or at the high school floor or the Lincoln School chiller, I think we could use, instead of building the DPW shed in FY26 with $3 million, you could do the Lincoln flatwork with that $3 million. You could make some dents on what the high school floor repair and replacement might need to be. So I think this is where John and I haven't done all of the horse trading, but I think that's where I land, that's certainly where I landed today is there's not a number that I'm comfortable that I think I can justify going on a ballot in March that says I need, I want to be sure I have a number, like I need $8 million. I need $25 million. I think we can look at the use of some of the current funds that we have. The overlay, which maybe we want to talk about in budget, which is our next agenda item, that could pay for an ambrose roof. It could pay for a lot of the Lincoln School chiller. It could pay for part of the Lincoln flatwork. So let's use ARPA. Let's use potentially overlay and let's look at in some of that playground money that's in the capital stabilization for FY26, that's $1.2 million for playgrounds. If we don't do all of them in FY26 or use the CPA for some of that because it's recreation and outdoor space, that may free up another $1.2 million that's currently on the capital stabilization FY26 horizon that we could use some of that money toward other infrastructure. So that's where, at least that's where I'm at. But I think I will say John and I did discuss it.
Yeah.
I think there's three to four million dollars beyond ARPA, beyond the overlay, that could go towards some of these priority projects right now.
And where are you getting that 3.3 and 4 million?
$3 million from the building stabilization fund to not build the DPW shed. $3 million, which is below the line, and $1.1 million in three playgrounds of which maybe we do one playground and we have $800,000 from the capital stabilization fund. So that's just about $4 million.
So I just want to clarify on my list, which I think were the three million, that wasn't like a programmed for 26. That was just a request. That wasn't like we were gonna, we were gonna use $3 million in 26 for the DPW. That was just a request that based on the fact that we just allocated engineering at fall town meeting, the request would come in in 26, not that it was being programmed for sure in 26, yeah.
But Rich, for example, there's about a million six available, left available for debt service. If we used a quarter of that, right? So if you have 50% of the total funding for capital and building stabilization. If you used 25% of the remainder of that, which is approximately $400,000, you could borrow about $5 million. So it doesn't get you all the way there, but if you, you could use $5 million. Now, I know we talked about free cash earlier for Mystic. So let's say we didn't use free cash for Mystic. And I'm not saying we should use free cash for this, but we could use a million dollars of free cash. I know there's other implications, but there's a bunch of different things I think we need to take a look at and say we're gonna do the trade-off for this or that or the other thing. So knowing all those, having opened up that kind of Pandora's box, we just couldn't, weren't ready for a March vote because we had more of a decision tree to work through.
So I guess my question to you is the warrant closes in mid-March, right, for late March, for town meeting for the spring.
So the warrant closes March 15th?
March 15th, mid-March. So if you're thinking about borrowing, you know, to do some of these projects, I mean, and we're talking one to two year life expectancy left on some of this stuff. Are you prepared to put some warrant articles on for the spring town meeting and so be ready in March to do that?
Well, I'm busy until January 22nd on another project.
I think, so the answer is likely yes, Rich. I think we also need to talk with Capita and I'll join John, I suppose, at a Capitol meeting if I don't violate a quorum. But let's think about that borrowing authorization. I, we heard last week, we don't want to use more than 50% for debt service. I'm not even saying use 75% for debt service. I'm saying use 60% for debt service. And I don't know that we need to put that warrant article on. That could be building stabilization now adds to the list of projects because they're going to borrow a bit more. And that's something, you know, the capital stabilization committee can put on the list. So.
So what if that doesn't pass? Because when we had the $400,000 for traffic that went into negotiations and amendments, that was based on the recommendation from FinCom that town meetings seemed to agree with that FinCom doesn't like borrowing. So if these are proposed again and FinCom says we don't like, we vote no because this is borrowing, like
We'll talk to FinCom.
Right, we'll find out what their solutions are. Because it's easy to say no, but you have to have some solutions too.
And I think FinCom's disinclination to borrowing is on the municipal side. That's borrowing to buy solar panels. That's not the same as borrowing, funding it through the enterprise funds and the stabilization funds. Their borrowing is on the debt service on the municipal side. I think that's more of their disinclination, but I think we need to unpack that a bit.
But wasn't that borrowing with capital? Capital budget? No? It was a capital article.
Which one are you referring to?
The traffic.
Yeah, it was borrowing. Yeah, it was borrowing through the capital stabilization fund, wasn't it?
Right, so the, the engineering was, the way it was originally proposed was it was $400,000 borrowing authorization with the assumption that we would be, we would do a ban and we would borrow for the construction. And like you said, it was changed, so it was just a the direct cash out of stabilization fund as opposed to a borrowing authorization.
I think the other thing we should, so that was last spring, right, was right, it was spring, it was traffic. In the fall, you had 11 to two in favor of borrowing to buy solar panels. So the same committee mostly, well, maybe three or four new members in the spring didn't want to borrow for traffic, but was in favor of borrowing to purchase solar panels, which we don't want, didn't need to wind up doing because the price came a little higher. So I'm not sure we can take one vote and decide that that's all votes because I think we've already seen them go back and be in favor of borrowing to purchase solar panels at $3 million. Bottom line, we need to understand what debt and debt service on the municipal side, debt on the stabilization fund side. What other levers would FinCom see us trying to pull? And I think John's also, you know, right in his opening comments around the maintenance, the notion of how do we maintain, what do we set aside so that we don't get into these end-of-life sort of crisis modes in perpetuity? I want to sort of talk with Jeff and John both on FinCom and understand what ideas they have.
And I think, you know, FinCom and our other stakeholders will appreciate a comprehensive strategic plan. I think that's what we've been needing for a while. And even to look to see when a general override for operating budget is going to be necessary, we certainly would put, you know, capital override there too. But Jeff raised an important question at the meeting on Friday as well, is that we need X amount of dollars invested in maintenance, right? So we just don't have that, right? So I think maintenance is an opportunity for us as we make these investments to extend their life. And we look at the Lincoln flatwork. DPW did a great job this summer doing a lot of repairs there. So it extended that project, right? And there's a kind of a want and a need with that particular project, right? There's the need of repairing the steps at some point in the next couple of years. I don't know how long the DPW repairs are gonna last. And then there's a outdoor classroom that's more of a want, right? So that originally came to us at 750 and then it doubled, right? So it's that kind of conversation and maybe some of the CPA funds, if we get that can go to things like outdoor classrooms and we can kind of continue to cobble together a strategy that makes sense with our limited resources and and hopefully have a successful CPA. And I know that I was even surprised at some of the conversation with FinCom members that wanted a higher surcharge for the CPA, right? Because they know the capital needs that we have. And that is surprising, right? Because I thought I was gonna have to convince them, you know, on the one and a half being high. But so we'll see.
So I guess my concern is you can only go the well so many times and, you know, we're going CPA. You know, there's some point in general operational, excuse me, an operational override. You heard, you know, at our budget summit, you know, Morocco, you know, as early as 2025, 2026. So, you know, from a timing standpoint, you're stacking all this up. So if your strategies don't work, you know, then we're really up against it. And the other thing is, I guess I take issue with, you know, the analysis, and I don't know how you guys came up with the analysis about, you know, the the useful life remaining on some of this, on some of these projects. I mean, if you go walk the gym floor with marcaria, you go watch a high school basketball game, not a youth basketball game, a high school one. That floor has reached its shelf life. It is dangerous. I went to the Bob Bigelow tournament, watched four games there. And, you know, there were kids slipping left and right on that floor. Under one hoop, it is completely worn out. It's like a hardwood floor under there. And not a hardwood floor, excuse me, like a slippery floor. It is like with socks on. It's, you know, you talk to the librarian, you know, the windows in the winter, you know, they try to keep them, you know, closed, but they got snow coming into the library. And, you know, you're gonna tell me that, you know, you know, the sky is falling, you know, argument, you know, we need to stop doing that. But, you know, if you get out, out of this room and you go walk these buildings, and I suggest, you know, we can set it up, and you talk to these people, you're gonna hear that. And, you know, it's been one to three years on a lot of these projects since I got on this board. And, you know, to go to town meeting, you know, the reports for the roof, for example, were done in July.
Right.
Right? So now you're talking about, well, if you miss this cycle of town meeting, or, you know, your strategies about, you know, relegating, you know, long-term strategy, coming up with a long-term strategy and, you know, using the money we were gonna spend on OPEB, directing that's capital or whatever you come up with, you know, you're talking years, CPA, same thing. We're talking, you know, a couple of years down the road. What else is going to crop up? In that meantime, you have this list, this list is only going to grow. Westside Fire Station, talk to, talk to the fire chief. Talk to the police chief about, you know, the buildings they have right now and the equipment they have now. You know, this list was generated based on needs that were put forward in the last, you know, few capital cycles. I only see this list growing and I just don't know how we get out of this hole. I think it's a two-pronged approach. I'm extremely disappointed that this is the route we're going to take on this. I think, you know, the opportunity was in March to put on some type of override, whether it was 40 million, 25 million, 10 million, you know, getting these projects, you know, or at least some of them off the ground. I think you need to go to the voters. And we're voting to at least put it to the voters. We're not voting to spend the money. It's going out to the voters. Let them decide. Tennis, what are you gonna say to the tennis people? Their courts are crumbling. What are you gonna say to the town? I mean, after, every time we've talked about town hall HVAC in this, at this table, I have received emails from a handful of staff members telling me how disappointed they are, you know, at the conversation and how they don't feel valued based on, you know, our, you know, our lack of commitment to making sure that their HVAC is adequate and, you know, you know, functioning in this building. There's a sense of, I mean, I didn't create this list. Staff had a lot of input over, you know, a lot of time to come up with this and tell you that these are our most immediate needs and their recommendation is to go to a debt exclusion override. And we kind of just put all that aside and say, you know, you guys do this for a living, you know, you're our trusted leaders, but we're gonna put all that aside and we're gonna come up with this other way to finance it because, you know, we're concerned about, you know, everything that we're strapping taxpayers with. And I could certainly appreciate that, but we have no problem funding a, you know, Lynch, we have no problem funding Morocco, you know. We have to address these problems sandwiched in between, or we're going to have, you know, a stacked up situation where, you know, the number's only going to be bigger, much bigger. And so the fact that we can't put an override question on for any of these projects in March and kind of chip away at this to me is extremely disappointing and extremely reckless. That's where I land.
Okay, Rich, first of all, you know, this was a compressed timeframe that we had to work in this. And if, so I'm not gonna go out with a half-baked proposal to the public. If, this is something we probably should have worked on a year ago in order to put it on the ballot now. And so you can be disappointed as you want, but I'm committed to ferreting this out and working with the FinCom to come up with something that we can get a collaborative support. And when it passes with the citizenship and it goes to town meeting, it will pass. So I'm not there right now. So you can berate me as much as you want, but it's not gonna work.
I'm not berating you, John. I'm expressing my frustration because I have been working on this for three years. Three years I've sat at this table and I've worked on this and I've listened to Capitol. And we've made minimal progress on this list. They've asked us for funding sources and we just can't, we can't do anything. We can't come up with a plan.
Well, so here's
If you don't want to do this, excuse me, if you don't want to do this, then fine. But come up with a plan. Come up with an alternative because all we do is just kick it down the road.
Instead of getting emotional, why don't you listen to what we said? We have a plan. We're going to execute it. If it doesn't meet the March timeframe, that's life.
What is your timeline, John?
Uh, what would you like it to be? I have something to do on the twenty-second, I'll do that.
We said May.
May was the first.
Is what we said we committed to, John and I, back in November, when we agreed to take on, come up with a capital plan to fund these projects and more in two to five years. That was the thing we signed up for. It morphed into maybe February nineteenth, we can have a, an override ballot question, but we said May. So.
So.
May.
So you're, so you're not going to put anything on for this town meeting in the spring?
I don't know that yet, but we will be talking to capital and looking at potentially, well, you know, their comfort level in borrowing more, talking to FinCom to use more of that borrowing authority before town meeting. We'll understand whether they're in or they're out, whether they think it has to be an override or not. We'll know more.
A- and the town, you understand that the finance committee expects the town manager to deliver a capital report for the next five years on January fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've talked with the town manager about what can and can't be in that report. And I don't think we said we would have a, a, a solution for the town manager on January fifteenth on any of these things, certainly not if there was a vote a month out. I don't think it impacts Beth's timeline at all, quite frankly. We never said we'd give Beth the, the, the number to plug because this is the override amount we're going to vote in a month. So, yeah.
I wish you all the best of luck. I won't be here, so I wish you all the best of luck. I have little faith that you'll get it done. Is there anything else to discuss on the capital planning side of things?
Jim, did you want to be recognized?
If you have a few minutes, I appreciate it. My concern is, capital committee, as you know, had allocated approximately a million dollars for planning um, for various projects based upon the input from this board, that they needed that information to be considered as an override. Right now, it doesn't look like this, um, million dollars, in my opinion, some of it was not a wise investment. What I think we should, th- this board may want to consider in their action is putting a hold on a lot of these projects that we feel per engineering or planning purposes. And, you know, we've got, um, library slate roof, we put a hundred thousand dollars, Ambrose roof, eight hundred. We put a hundred thousand, um, McCall roof, we put a hundred, um, let's see, what else? We put a, um, library windows, town hall windows, we put a hundred grand each about. Lincoln chiller, we put some money aside, a hundred thousand. Um, storage building, we put some money in there. Uh, slate roof construction, we put a hundred thousand in. And if these projects aren't going to go forward, uh, let's see, what else? We put, uh, Shore Road Bridge in, Everett add, construction was eighty-eight. And I believe that it may be a time to evaluate what projects could go forward in the next year with some funding. Um, but do we, is this the wisest use of several hundred thousand dollars?
So I think that question's been asked a couple of different times.
Oh, it has.
And, and I think staff has always maintained, and, and I think this board would agree, I would hope, that these projects aren't going away.
No.
That we need the engineering to figure out how to fund them.
But one of the problems with that, Rich, and I, first of all, I support you completely, but is if these projects are three to five years out, is that the best use of the money based upon the fact that things change? The first thing is the condition of the building, um, will deteriorate worse than it is now within the next three to five years. So is that plan going to be relevant or is it going to be moany? The second is the, uh, and we saw it with the Morocco COVID, is the permitting process is maybe a little more encompassing? Maybe, uh, state law specs, uh, state building codes change? I'm just saying maybe some of these projects, um, may want to suggest to the town manager that she put them on hold and we review them May twentieth, whatever you say, see if it's worth going forward, um, for the next cycle. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, everybody.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Anything else on capital? All right, FY twenty-five budget.
So just, we're, we're actively signing contracts for this money, so.
Let's roll.
I just, I don't want to get in a position where, you know, I've just signed a contract for something and I get different direction from this board on any of the money.
Stop it.
That's been previously appropriated by town meeting, so I think we're kind of in a situation now of I need, I didn't need to know immediately if there's a direct.
So I have a little pet list here, I'm glad you asked. Um, Lincoln school chiller replacement, Mystic school heating system, WH, WHS concrete floor, the gym replacement, the Ambrose school roof and some form of the library slate roof. And I, in my mind, said, hey, those are immediate, so we should just press on with that stuff. We're going to find a way to fund that.
We're, we're pressing on on roofs and, I mean, I mean.
We have a list of pro- you know, funding that was allocated at Fall Town Meeting and we are pressing forward with getting, you know, everybody under contract to do that work, unless I hear otherwise, and, and probably have already signed maybe a few contracts to be perfectly honest speaking.
Yeah.
So stay the course.
Okay, thank you.
FY twenty-five budget.
So, um, you know, we had a kind of preliminary discussion.
Which people found to be helpful on Friday. I've heard from like, almost a half a dozen people, like via text and calls and emails saying, I mean, more people watched, I think, after the fact than real time, but literally, I think I got four, four folks reach out since Friday. So thank you for making the time.
Sure.
Board and Beth, and inviting the people that were there. I didn't hear from Jeff, so maybe he didn't love it, but that's.
Yeah.
So I think, um, I'm not obviously going to go through the presentation again, but just coming out of that, there were a few questions, you know, I um, obviously need some policy direction from the board in terms of, um, where we want to go from here. And I think the, the three big items that I had, um, coming out of Friday and, and obviously um, want to hear from you all was, uh, there, there are three new positions that have been requested by, uh, municipal staff, a town planner, or assistant town planner, deputy fire chief, which, um, none of these are new requests, I'll say. Assistant town planner, deputy fire chief, um, and the third one is.
Lynch.
Thank you. The, the custodian at Lynch School. Um, so those are obviously ones we talked about, talked about for the last two budget cycles that I've been here at least. Um, and so I'd be looking to get some direction from the board on your thought in terms of those three. Um, the next question kind of I had in my list was, you know, this is obviously still preliminary. We're working to get these numbers down and until we get the school number at the end of January, um, this is all just an estimate, but we're, i- i- it seems clear to me unless we have some deep cuts both on the school and the municipal side, that we're going to be looking at some use of free cash to close the gap in the FY twenty-five budget. And so just getting sort of people's comfort around what does that look like? And I think part of that is a conversation about the overlay money. So if we have somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars, do we put that towards closing the operating gap or, as I think you had both suggested earlier, use that towards capital? So those are the three items that I had on my list that I could really use some direction from this board as I, you know, in the next month really look to finalize things. Obviously open to any other comments you all have.
Really two questions, Beth, or maybe still there's three? I guess it's, it's the positions, it's overlay and then depending on where overlay lands, because there's probably still a free cash need.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So I don't want to take it in that order.
Yeah.
What's the disposition of overlay, which then would impact what's, what do we need to use for free cash?
Right. And the thing I, I just want to mention was, you know, and you all know this, but, um, you know, we had a an article at Fall Town Meeting to move a million dollars from free cash into the health insurance stabilization fund.
Which.
Had we done that, I would be recommending to you right now that we move a million dollars out of the health insurance stabilization fund to fund the budget because of the eight percent health insurance increase. So I kind of look like, look at that as a wash, even though it's sitting in free cash, it's money that we had already kind of allocated in our minds.
With a known need, yeah.
Right.
So, so a couple of things, Beth, um, the eight percent of the health insurance, is that final or negotiated down?
Uh, not negotiated. We'll, we'll find out what our number is, um, at the, um, the.
End of January?
Yeah, the.
I- is eight percent the ceiling though, the max?
Eight percent is what they told us to plan for. Ten, it was ten percent and then we did the post sixty-five Medicare, you guys voted that last fall. So we got a two percent rate reduction, pla- for planning purposes. Um, they, they told us to plan for eight percent. Now, hopefully it'll come in seven point five, but I, I mean, that's just what we're using for now.
And then we budget four hundred thousand dollars a year for overlay?
Uh, right, so that's one of the things that I'm going to be working with Stacy and the assessor over the next few weeks to talk about because I think it's worth looking at our historical usage now that we have this kind of.
Right, so it could be like.
Closeout of some older accounts to say, are we over budgeting for that? Can we reduce that by?
So that could call that delta maybe by a couple hundred thousand dollars and we have maybe some good news.
I don't think it'll be four hundred. I mean, maybe we'll reduce it by a hundred.
Yeah, okay, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, it's not, it's, yeah, it's, it's something, but it's not significant.
No, but if you have two hundred there and then you have some good news on the health insurance, maybe you're, now you're looking at a total of five hundred thousand and so that delta gets smaller, you have overlay money or not, I, you know, I'm not really sure. Um, as far as the positions, um, I, we talked about having the custodian, you know, that would be a higher later in the year, but I think we all agree that we need that position from the complexity of energy management system at, at Lynch. I mean, I, is there, I don't know who else would get to do that. There's not another.
I feel.
So, so let's take them one at a time. So we've got the assistant planner position.
Okay.
And we absolutely.
So we learned this year that when we had, we're down a planner, it, it crippled the planning side of our government.
For months.
For months. And if it wasn't for a volunteer, DAB, in Sallydale, you know, that, you know, used all their vacation time.
Right.
You know, we had problems. So this is a position that they've wanted to have for a while now, so, you know, much like we have some, you know, redundancy in, in some of the other departments, you know, this is where they feel like they've needed something. There's some time now. So what do people think of this position?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, after eight months, I think we were without a planner, that that's not something that we want to risk going through again and having the redundancy and being able to have capacity is important.
Yep.
Agree.
I'm, I'm in favor.
Yeah.
So the next position is the assistant fire chief. So I think as Beth said at the bu- budget summit, this was created on the, in the last collective bargaining agreement with the fire department.
Three plus years ago?
It was the contract that, that former town manager negotiated.
Yes, so their last one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So three plus years ago at this point. And we've never funded it. Um, it would not reduce, I think if someone asked about the captains.
Captain's count, yes.
This is an added position. Um, and, you know, there's money in there to do an assessment center search as well, so. Thoughts on supporting this?
What's, what's the need for it? I, I just don't know. I didn't, wasn't here part of the collective bargaining agreement and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I.
obligation to fund it, frankly.
I wasn't obviously either during that.
Both in history.
I think, I don't know, for the board members who were here, if you had any background on that, um.
Mike?
Uh, it was, it was a request through the, uh, negotiation collective bargaining agreement for that, that cycle, so I don't, I don't think that it was, um.
I don't know if it's going to reduce workload on someone or that's all.
I mean, I think it's a similar succession planning issue, right? I mean.
No, I think it's more than that. I think there's duties that, that, you know, that the chief, you know, can't get to, you know, that wants to pass on to the assistant fire chief. I'm, I'm sure, I mean, if we had, we can have Steve come in, I'm sure he would tell you what, you know, they envisioned for that position, but, you know, um, I remember talking to, when I first got elected with Chief Tustin about it um, years ago, uh, and he mentioned how, he felt how important it was to have. Um, and, you know, and really from a workload standpoint, you know, leadership in the department. Um, you know, training wise, things like that, so. I would almost, if we're, you know, questioning this, I would.
Would it be twenty-second or if, if he's available?
Yeah, I would have, I would have the chief come in.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, you know, on our next meeting and just give us an explanation of why, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that'll, that'd be great.
I mean, rather than guess at it. And then the Lynch one, you know, we've talked about this regularly as part of, you know.
Yeah.
If you're going to build this building, you know, you need someone of this stature with their capabilities and also, yeah. No, we're just, I guess, that this, it's through the DPW, but the other stuff is, um, the five-year sprinkler inspection, the playground inspections, things like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the playground piece is, is new, something I asked them at to add, but I, I think based on what we saw this year, I don't think it's something we, we can take out, something that should have been in all along.
Absolutely.
That just wasn't adequately accounted for.
So eighty-seven thousand for the position at Lynch, I think is, is that the number, Beth?
That's what, yeah, um, yeah, budgeted at this point.
So it's just, it's one person. I know that was questions we had when the Lynch question was on the ballot is how many more custodians is it? So the high school, I think it was net new, two new positions. This is one new position. I'm still in favor of it, so. I'm in favor of all of it, but though I'm happy to hear the chief talk about the deputy fire chief's roles. But I think for, from my perspective, Beth, and I don't speak for all of us, like, keep all of those in this budget as in your working draft. That's the Michelle vote.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. It would be helpful to hear from the, the chief or, um, you know, if he can't make it in even to, to send us just a little blurb on it. Um, you know, would be enough as well. Um, but, uh, and I think, um, maybe touching base with the schools to see the timeline on hiring the, um, position for Lynch, um, you know, it, it, what we've seen lately is that, um, good hires for us have been taking a long time and, um, we really lucked out with Chris Conway at the high school. Um, and, uh, you know, we can't always count on, you know, finding the, the, the right person for that job, you know, in this market, so. Um, I, I, I leave it up to the schools to see what their, um, their timeline is on it.
Schools, it's DPW position.
DPW staff, not the school department staff.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't know if they, um, are, you know, would be, um, favor of it opening, you know, having somebody before the building opens or when the building opens. I, I don't know, I mean.
Yes, I think their, their recommendation, um, from Pete was that they want the, maybe we don't need to hire them July first and certainly I can work with them.
Yeah.
Maybe if we scale back, you know, three quarters of the year, but, um, they want that person to be there for, like, towards mid to end constructions, they can be there for the commissioning and, you know, understand kind of the school from the ground up, so to speak. Um, so I, you know, I'll, I'll try to maybe whittle that down to three fourths of the year or something like that, because like I said.
I'm not even saying to do, I, I don't, I just don't even know, right? I know certainly in a, a, a way in advance of the commissioning of the building is necessary for us to, to have somebody on that is, um, of high caliber. And the other pieces that, um, we've seen that in order to be competitive in the market, we, we've had to increase the salary range for some of these positions, um, so, um, it's, we've come back a few times.
Carry the full year and if they come later?
Yeah, right, that makes sense.
You know, yeah. And if it costs more, you'll let us know that too, or somebody will along the way.
All right, so that answers questions on the positions and then on the free cash, we kind of touched on it, right, is that next?
Yeah. I mean, hopefully we're going to be below the two-one to two-four range, but not two million dollars, less than that. So, um, you know, I think just getting a, a general sense that, one, do we want to put any of the overlay money towards operating? And two, just make sure I get the sense of the board that, you know, we're not, we're not going to be able to, like we did for FY twenty-four. We're not going to have a fully balanced budget and so we're going to need some free cash, whatever, whatever that number is, and it's not two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's a bigger number.
A million was going to go to health insurance, didn't get approved, so we're trying to use a million. I mean, it, whether that was, it was like a million fifty was the article, right, the motion, so Beth, I would defer to your judgment on is it just an even million dollars that we would have kept out of free cash and would have put in, dedicated to health insurance to pay for what we know is a health insurance increase? And then I think that, then it's the, what's the next delta? Is another six hundred thousand, is another, you know, eight hundred thousand or million that we need to then close the gap, but I think the first million of health insurance money is absolutely.
It's free.
Yeah, it's not.
No, I.
It was the plan.
Right.
Right? And so do we then say it's another million or nine hundred thousand dollars? Reduce the overlay appropriation by a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars? Reduce the overlay appropriation by a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars? I think that is, it's a question for the board, is there's a current balance in the overlay, which, which John and I in our capital sort of thinking what we could fund, thought if that went into capital, it pays for, you know, an Ambrose roof or it pays for a lot of the.
Chiller.
Lincoln chiller. If we just use it to capital, not to balance the budget, it gets us one of these projects. So that would be my preference was to use the overlay for capital. I think the board could decide to split the difference, right? Put seventy-five percent to capital and twenty-five percent to the operating budget, but I was thinking that that's a, it's kind of a one-time. We don't usually, we don't want to accrue the overlay at the same pace. We want to actually reduce that appropriation to not, you know, not have this overlay windfall, but it's a windfall that I could see knocking off one of our priority projects.
So I'd be careful about the, with that language, because I think under state law, you have to put away so much.
Yes, you do, it's.
And you have to leave it in for so long. So it's not like we're squirreling away this money.
No, it's just, it grew over time with fewer abatements, that's, that's good, that's a good correction on language, Rich.
And I think even last year in doing the budget, I think there was, you all, I think there's always, they always ask what's available.
Right, right. So we had, we had less abatement activity and it grew and we're in a position to leave some in there and, because we have to, and not necessarily grow it or put as much aside at the same pace because we're looking at recent abatement experience. But we do have a balance that we could redirect.
Yeah, and it's, it's held in individual years, so it doesn't grow as one kind of account. It grows in each fiscal year or get, put, put in each fiscal year and then we can close out what's left.
So I think in, at least in the budget summit documents, Beth, your recommendation was use, you know, using the overlay money to close the budget deficit. And I think the guidance best looking for, because she's going to have to go back and do some work, is if you want to put that money towards capital, she needs to know that sooner rather than later so that she can do work on her end to kind of, you know, plug in the gaps or, you know, make deeper cuts. And I, I don't want to speak for you, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's the question, do we want to use it for capital? Do we want to use it for operating? Do we want to split it up somehow? How do we want to?
If you take the overlay money for capital, then maybe it's more free cash that you're going to use. So it's, it's coming out of somewhere, it's just a question of.
I mean, the way, because it's within this year, it's, it's treated more like a revenue, right? By the, at the end of FY twenty-four, if we don't use the overlay money, it will close. If, once the assessors vote it into the overlay surplus, it will close to free cash. But right now it's almost like a revenue source, right? Because it's kind of within the budget cycle.
So that's kind of why Beth needs to know this, like I said, sooner rather than later.
I'm happy with using the overlay for capital, I think it's consistent with our policy to use, you know, reversions, which I, I see it as really for one-time expenses, not for future operating expenses. But if we have, you know, twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent, whatever mix that is, I, I, you know, I'm comfortable with that as well. So that would be my, my preference.
I guess my, my only question with that is then, so if you want to use it for capital, are you using it for this spring town meeting? Or are you using it, you know, is you going to close to free cash and then you're going to use it?
No, use it now.
So then you need to have something to put on, kind of goes back to my point, you need to have something to put on for the spring town meeting.
To move it out of the overlay surplus into public stabilization.
Yeah.
Yes.
So is that something you want management to start preparing, a warrant article in that direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Right?
You're, I'm speaking for me, yes, you're speaking for you, yes.
I'm asking for extensive support because I know it seems like we have a lot of time, but we don't.
We don't.
Agreed.
So March fifteenth, it's like three meetings away.
Three meetings away.
So if we look at like the immediate.
And Beth's budgets do in two meetings, sorry.
I was just saying, if we look at like the, like the immediates on this list is the Lincoln school chiller, Mystic we've talked about and the, the concrete floor, which I don't know.
The concrete floor doesn't have a, have a number yet. So I think that, you know, you could, you could either.
Library window replacement.
Use it for, allocate for a specific project, or you could just vote it to go into the stabilization fund and like capital, you know, allocate it in our normal course of the next capital cycle.
I think I'd be inclined for a specific project, but I think that's a little bit ahead of it. I think we're trying to understand if the direction is, we think we want to make it available for capital in this current budget year bef, you know, for this current town meeting cycle. That's where I'd like to see it. And I think I'd like it all to go there.
Sorry, just not available to capital, but available for a specific capital project put on by us, yes.
Yes.
So either at our January twenty-sixth or February fifth meeting. Yeah, we should at least have a preliminary discussion of what that project will be so that we can prepare a warrant article by.
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. What else, Beth, do you need guidance on, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, those were the three big ones. Plus, I mean, you kind of all saw where we are, where we're headed. Is there anything that jumps out at you from a policy direction that you feel is going off the rails here or need to make a change or add or?
I mean, I'll speak for myself, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh are scary propositions there. And I think, you know, if there is cutting that has to be done or something, you know, they're going to be deep if it's done in one year. So I, I, I think every year we need to do this, but you go back and just sharpen your pencil and make sure there's nothing that we're, you're not, both on the school side and the municipal side, that we're not just leaving in.
Yeah, I mean.
Every, every little bit helps and if you can build it up over a couple of years, then it helps even more.
You know, we've talked about it the last few years that I've been here at least, is that we're on a path towards an operating override. And what we said last year was we could get through twenty-five and that we would likely need one for twenty-six. And I think we're close to needing one for twenty-six.
Yep.
We're at the upper end of these projections, so that would, that would be a year from now, some sort of about question for an operating override, so. That's, you know, that's just kind of where we're headed, I think.
Yeah, that's helpful for me to know, you know, when that is, right? I think that we're a little bit on fumes with the override. And so if we are planning one in, in twenty-six, then, you know, it's a question of what portion of that is operating, portion of that is capital and what our strategy is there, so, and we'll, we'll know at that point from the CPA and we'll know from some of these, some of these other projects what, what we need to do. And like I said before, I think Jeff's suggestion down the road of, of having a larger capital and building maintenance fund, you know, makes, makes sense and is probably a good, good conversation for us. I don't know if other communities invested that substantially, but seems like a good, a good strategy.
Anything else on the budget?
We're having the comptroller come in February, right? Is that what Stacy's mom said? Or no?
Yes, I thought she said.
Or is it, or is it the end of January?
Like half year report, right? She usually comes in at the end of the fiscal year and halfway through, I think she said.
So, and I, I'm just looking at the comptroller's report in the package and, you know, expenses are, salary expenses are sort of at or below. Expense, expenses are sort of above, sort of keeping pace in revenue collections, like investment earnings are up, which is good. Some other revenue was not so much, like we talked about this in permits and some of the stuff that you have, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there could be some good news potentially on the revenue side, which, you know, we'll take any two hundred thousand dollar bit of good news that we can get if we reduce overlay, if health insurance happens or investment does. I'm feeling, I still, it's still scary, but I'm hopeful that there might be some good news on the revenue side while we're in this fiscal year.
Yep.
So. I'll look, look forward to hearing more from Stacy.
Yeah, she's looking to come February fifth meeting.
That's what I thought, I couldn't get the date right, thank you, Patty.
All right, moving on, Waterfield lot, so our due diligence period expires. There's been a lot of action on the Waterfield lot. They're, you know, there's planning board meeting tomorrow night on permitting, so they're looking to extend the due diligence period for a couple of weeks in order to get through that process, so any discussion on that? Everyone okay with extending the due diligence period?
Yes, waiting on the date.
Is there a motion?
Motion to extend the due diligence period in the Ninth Amendment to the amended and restated land development and access agreement for Winchester Waterfield MM LLC. And author is the town manager to sign on the town's behalf.
We're extending it to February.
February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, turning on the passes? All right, that's it on Waterfield, Washington Swanton Street, similar situation, we need to extend our due diligence time. They've asked for an extension, things are progressing on that project as well. And they're looking for a few extra weeks as well. So is there any discussion on that? All right, everyone seems comfortable with that, is there a motion?
Motion to extend the due diligence period for Washington Swanton Street to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four for, in the Sixth Amendment to the Right of Entry and License Agreement and the Sixth Amendment to the Land Disposition Agreement.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Great. Anyone opposed, turning on the passes? Last up on our business agenda, CPA working group update, is there any update?
No, Anthony and I were just talking about that earlier today, so I think in the next couple of weeks, we're going to get the group back together and start strategizing for kind of a more comprehensive report as we go into town meeting and, and more of a communication strategy around that as well. So I would say hopefully by our, our next meeting, we'll, I'm not sure, depending on people's schedules, we'll have, we'll have something.
And the warrant is March fifteenth?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
All right, so we'll put it on for our next meeting?
Yeah, I think it's good that we've been just kind of keeping it on there and so.
All right, appreciate it. Consent agenda, any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Any else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, WinCam, have a good night.